Rule call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Mesky.
Yes.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Seen in hearing, none? Understand a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those were made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. Consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of February 19th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of February 25th, Planning Commission minutes of February 20th, application for Rice Memorial Hospital Board of Anthony Ogdal, accounts payable report, February 14 through February 28. For council's acceptance, the Human Rights Commission minutes of January 15th, Wilmer Lakes Area CVB Board minutes of January 15th, Central Community Transit Operation Board minutes of November 27, 2018. And for council's information, the Invest in Wilmer Board meeting summary of February 13th. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. Seen in hearing, none? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. That motion does carry. Open forum, Mr. Bob Inos.
Thank you. Got a couple of props for you today. Maybe some of you remember this. I didn't know anything about this. Oh, Bob Inos, I live in town. I was contacted this week by a few of the patrons of the senior center. And evidently, I didn't know about this petition they submitted to you guys before the referendum. And the highlight I hit there was that the current building, in their view, should be kept as a community center and necessary repairs to be made. I'm not a patron. I've been two or three times, play pool, that sort of thing. That's about it. But, you know, in looking at the names of the people that signed on to this petition, there were 120 names on there. And they were mostly Norwegians and Swedes and Germans and Irish people. And with old names that I'd write down, like Esther and Shirley and Eunice and, you know, all the old timers that we don't really hear much anymore. But I was mostly struck by they were 90% female, which I presumed meant that they were mostly widows. And, you know, when I left my last house in Rehoboth, I bought it from a fellow, Harry Johnson. We became best friends. He was 70. And his wife had died four or five years ago. He was a farmer. And he wanted to sell it to me because he said, "Bob, everywhere I bump into here, I bump into memories. And I just can't take it anymore." You know, sometimes when we talk about these projects, sometimes we just need to take a moment and pause and think about the human element. And I suspect a lot of the people out there, especially the women, are like Harry, you know? And they are bumping into those memories at home. And this is just a place that they can go and be with like-minded people who have been through what they've been through and not feel so alone and maybe share some experiences that nobody else knows, except they do. And, you know, as you get older especially, and I'm finding this, we like our patterns and we like our routines, you know? We do the things in the order that we do. And I imagine they probably feel safe there and they've probably built new memories there. And before you run off and put them in a new place, think about the older ones that maybe aren't going to make this adjustment very well. And this is not a tour. This is something I wanted to show you for impact, and I hope you're not offended by this. But this is what I made. That's their names. 130 people that are mostly, yeah, probably considerably older than I am, took the time to do this. And how often do you find people doing that unless it's something that's really important to them? So just give it some thought. And thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a hearing. Ordinance amending planning and development departmental fees.
Mayor members of the council. Tonight, we have a public hearing to consider planning and development department fee adjustments. As we discussed two weeks ago, it has been over five years since these fees have been updated. And it is time to bring them up to par with the rising expense of publishing public notices in the paper and the mailings that are required for a lot of the public hearings. Attached, you will find the updated fees. So fees such as conditional use permits, variances, rezones, or variances and appeals that were 275 will increase to 350. Fees for rezoning or text amendments will be increased to 400. Plan reviews will be increased to 150. And right-of-way utility easement vacations up to 500. And then the rental fees, there's a proposed update to the initial inspection fee, which happens once every four years. So currently, it's $60 per single-family home and $10 per unit after that. And we're proposing $100 per single-family home with an additional $20 per unit after that. So it is staff recommendation that we, the council, approve the adjustments and adopt an ordinance to amend the fees.
Okay, this is a public hearing. And the public hearing meeting is open. Is anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Seen in hearing, none? I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the new fee schedule.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the fee schedule as presented by staff. Discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. I was just curious, on some of them that were 275, some have gone up to 350 and some went up to 400. What was your logic on that?
Yep. For the rezoning and the text amendment, there are additional rounds. So rezoning and text amendments have to come to the council, which means additional staff time, additional publishings, whereas the conditional use permit and the variances do not come to council. So it's less staff hours and less publishing fees.
Okay.
Additional questions? The ordinance that's being suggested to us is to amend the planning and development departmental fees. Assign it a number, publish it, and it'll take effect. Rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. The next, I will open the public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance, Section 6Q relating to Technology District. Ms. Swedberg.
Mayor members of the council, the planning commission was requested to consider allowing an office business professional use outright in the Technology District. Currently, all uses in the technology zone, which really just encompasses Midwest Technology Campus, require a plan review. The district was set up in 2006 when the technology campus begun. And we feel that after 12-plus years, Midwest Campus, this district is unique because it has that second layer of oversight. Midwest Technology Campus knows what they're all about. They know the intent of the district. And we feel that this particular use, just this office use, is small. It's almost always placed in the main office building and it only encompasses a couple staff people. So Planning Commission held a public hearing on this text amendment and approved the request forwarding it to council. And it's staff recommendation that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Seen in hearing, none? I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve the ordinance, be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, I'll open the public hearing for an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to rezone properties from R2, one and two-family dwellings to I, to general industry. Again, Ms. Swedberg.
Mayor members of the council, Planning Commission again was requested to consider this rezone of land for continued industrial uses. Currently, the parcels are owned by Perkins Lumber and BNSF. They would continue to be. We don't currently have any development plans on our desks. There is some consideration for Perkins Lumber to reconstruct a storage building, but this change couldn't happen without this rezone. Staff saw the zoning on the map and it is more or less considered an oversight on the zoning map. So it's just more of a formality to correct what it should have been historically. With that, staff recommendation to that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Seen in hearing, none? I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish it.
Second.
Those were made and seconded. Rule call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Ms. Swedberg, thank you for your time. I can tell you were trained well. Thank you very much. Very professional job. Next, we have the Public Works Public Safety Committee report. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Public Safety Committee met 5:15 February 20. We called the meeting to order. The first item on our agenda was the discussion of a parking situation, specifically residential parking situation on the southeast quadrant of town. Staff did bring forth for approval the discussion of residential parking concerns on Second Street Southeast, Third Street Southeast, Fourth Street Southeast from Becker Ave. to Olina Ave., Fifth Street Southeast from Johanna to Olina Avenue, and 15th Street Southeast from 19th to Pleasant View. With increased parking, there's concern for obstruction of snow removal operations due to narrow street widths in current parking scenarios. Staff was requesting signage on the streets for seasonal parking restrictions. The committee discussed reevaluating additional streets, potentially next year as well as others, that face the same issue with snow removal and the narrow width of the streets and especially pertaining to years of accumulating and high amounts of snowfall, such as we're experiencing this year. Coming from that discussion, a motion was made and seconded to approve a seasonal no-parking restriction along Second Street Southeast, Third Street Southeast, Fourth Street Southeast from Becker to Olina, Fifth Street Southeast from Johanna Avenue to Olina Avenue, and 15th Street Southeast from 19th to Pleasant View Drive. The motion carried in the committee level, and I would like to present that motion now.
Motion made and seconded. Maybe if I can take some liberty, Councilmember Plowman, to maybe go over a procedural question that maybe might help us for future motions.
Absolutely.
In the past, in the works, or in the council committee format, when a motion was made from committee, the motioner at the committee level is the person who seconds the motion from the chair of the committee. So in this particular case, Councilmember Osmus would be the motioner and Councilmember Plowman would introduce as the chair. And then the rest of the council members would yield to Councilmember Osmus to second that motion, to move it to the table. So we kind of understand how we did it in the past. I'm not saying that's how we have to do it now, but it really makes the meeting flow if we do it that way. So if you made the motion at committee level and you are not the chair, which generally that wouldn't happen, it happens occasionally, a few times a year, then the person who made the second to the motion, because the chair now has made the motion, would then second the motion at the council level. So what happened just now is the correct way to do it, but there was a pause there that might be more comfortable if people are understanding why some people are maybe waiting and not seconding it. It's not for a lack of support of the motion. It's more of a procedural. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to bring this to the table for discussion because of feedback that I think a few of us have gotten, but I can only speak for myself, feedback that we've gotten from the community as well as maybe just some questions and whatnot as to how this arose and the quick-moving nature of it and whatnot. So if I could just speak at liberty and openly and honestly about it. The evening that we met was a quite snowy evening itself. I think half of us were parked towards the middle of the street. So the snow was coming down and there was more snow forecasted for the future. The Public Works staff did bring this issue to our attention as being an issue that was not only an issue, going to be an issue in the future, but was clearly an issue in the current. In other words, they were very concerned regarding the safety and the practicality and the feasibility of snow removal on these streets, literally that night and the following days. We were presented with some information that led us to believe that those streets, you know, dependent on what the snow amounts would be and dependent on the parking, those streets may have become impassable and not knowing what the weather's going to do, it was our determination that something needed to be done in a way that would address it immediately, enabling Public Works to address the problem immediately and avoid creating a worse problem. And those problems can exist from a simple inconvenience all the way to safety concerns with public safety vehicles, snow removal vehicles, and other vehicles actually being able to make it through those streets. So it was not our intent at the committee level to simply just go ahead and create an open-ended parking restriction that just put into place the parking restriction permanently and just push it through. That wasn't the intent. The intent was to allow Public Works to be able to address the issue immediately and to avoid further complication. And so I just kind of wanted to clear that up for the council so that they knew that this was not an action intended to create permanent action or to sidestep the council or anything of that nature. Discussion was held and, you know, we were all in agreement that this is something that is, you know, a temporary deal because of the weather this year and that should it become or need to become permanent in nature, it's definitely something that the council needed to hear and discuss further. And furthermore, the point was made multiple times that Public Works would be reporting back as soon as this next Public Works meeting, which is in a day or two here. So with that, I will open the table for other discussion.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I too think that a clarification of what we're actually, the resolution, what we're doing tonight probably is in order. But I did want to share some concerns and comments that I had heard from residents there, too. They indicated they had contacted the city and were told that there would be no parking there from November 1st to April 1st. And they felt that that was overly restrictive. The one person I talked to said she had driven those streets and there's approximately 260 houses there who would basically be going with five months without being able to park on the street. I shared with her that that was not, I did not believe that was the intent of, you know, what we were looking at, that it would be, that we needed to be able to empower the streets to be clean. At the same time, she was very quick to praise Public Works. She was thankful that, how quickly the streets and that it was necessary to do something to help enhance the snow removal on those streets. And I think when we were having the discussion at the committee level, we were asking some questions, too, about how do we, are we able to do a citywide snow emergency? How do we empower Public Works to be able to do these things as necessary? The other thing I heard, too, was that they would appreciate enforcement of people who are violating it, you know, that the cars that are sitting there. We had that discussion at the committee level, too, and that's a challenge, I think, for how our enforcement is set up and the education part of just being able to drive up and down the streets. So I wanted to share that information. The other thing I think I also heard from people, why are you only doing those streets? We've got issues over on Quincy Avenue and there's issues on the north side and there's issues other locations. And so I think the question with how do we do this to help residents citywide and help to educate people? So I just am looking a little bit for the clarification on what we did with this resolution. I know we wanted, we said, "Go see what you can do, get it done, and we'll bring it to the council table." So I'm just curious with that. But I have to convey that I am concerned about no parking from November 1st to April 1st, if that's what we're trying to accomplish on the east side. I think it is a problem over there. There's a lot of rental properties there, and so I'm carrying that message forward.
City Attorney Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin, members of the council. I did review the parking regulations in the city code before tonight's meeting. There is a procedure to declare a snow emergency, it looks like citywide. I don't know if that's something that is ever put into place in practice or if it would take a really extreme snowfall event. It appears, based on the language of the code, that that would apply citywide. So there'd be no parking on any public way essentially until that street had been plowed. Certainly, looking at the resolution in your packet, I understand we're talking about a more targeted restriction. And talking to Councilor Plowman before the meeting, I understand it was intended to be temporary in nature just to deal with the imminent conditions that are making things difficult. With that in mind, I guess I would suggest a couple of clarifications to the resolution in your packet. The last paragraph, which basically contains the action of the resolution, it doesn't clarify if this is going to be an ongoing resolution or not. I would suggest that we could alter that last paragraph and have it say that, "Now therefore be it resolved that the city shall temporarily ban," instead of "ban the seasonal parking," it would say, "shall temporarily ban the parking of motor vehicles on the specified streets." And then at the end of that sentence, I think you could say that the ban will remain in place until such time as conditions improve in the judgment of probably the Public Works Director. It could probably also be the police chief, but I think you could assign the authority to determine when the all-clear is sounded and regular parking can resume on that street just by designating a position at the end of that clause. That action, this kind of a targeted action to temporarily restrict parking in specific streets is authorized by your city code in Section 15.53. The one thing I'd just point out to the council is it takes six council members to approve that resolution. Fortunately, you have six council members here tonight. And once it's approved, that resolution has to be published and then signs have to be posted along the designated streets.
So there's a recommendation from the city attorney to amend the motion that's on the table. Are the maker of the motion and the seconder agreeable to the amendment?
I am agreeable to the amendment.
Yes.
So the motion as amended, Ms. Thompson reads.
That we amend the resolution to read in the last paragraph. "Now therefore be it resolved that the city shall temporarily ban the seasonal parking of motor vehicles on the designated streets." And the ban would remain in place, I think you said, at the discretion of the...
Until such time as conditions improve in the judgment of, and I think that ought to be the Public Works Director, but that could be any position you designate.
Question for the Public Works Director, then. Mr. Christiansen. Hearing the amendment and given the discussion that was had on the 20th with the amended resolution, kind of making this motion more temporary in nature, does it seem to you as still accomplishing what needs to be accomplished for this year in terms of snow removal?
Councilmember Plowman, I believe in general, yes. I think we're making this a little more difficult than it needs to be. The idea is to get rid of the snow and let the cars park along the curb and so that the street width accomplishes that. That's the general idea of the comment, in a nutshell. Yeah, I think that what Attorney Scott has said, I think, works well. I think it still accomplishes what we want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Just go comment your questions. Councilmember Fagerly.
I commend the committee for bringing this up because I've brought it up over the years and always got shot down. Typically, when you do something like this, you do it for the next season. So, I mean, if we can call a snow emergency for the entire community, that seems to be the best way to go right now because there's a lot of areas that need help or the snowplow drivers need help. So I'd prefer to do it that way and then put the signage out next year and then no parking from April, or November to April 1st.
A question then for Councilmember...
Councilmember Plowman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Would that be intended to be then every year for, like, restricting parking the entire time or just during declared snow emergency events?
I'd say for the entire time. It's what they do on Fifth Street Southwest by the apartments there. And Redeemer Church, there's no parking for the whole season there.
I think if we did, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification. I think these streets are already only parking on one side. I think that's what's on Fifth Street also. And so I think part of the discussion that we had at Public Works was we need to investigate kind of what, you know, there's a lot of streets on the east side already that are marked for only parking on one side on a seasonal basis. And it feels like this whole thing probably needs to be looked at, you know? Should there be parking on Candy Ojai and Trot and all of those things? But for me, I do see a concern, and I've heard a concern from this neighborhood, that to have no parking for five months on the street, there's a lot of rental properties over there and they are not allowed to park in the tenants' driveway or they can only temporarily park in the temp. You know, I don't know that, no parking, what if it doesn't snow? And then to say, "Well, we won't enforce it. We won't enforce it all the time," then that's like saying we're just not going to enforce it. So I guess I'd like to see us review it more. I'm supportive of your, in general, your concept of just empowering them to do a snow emergency as needed in the entire community, but to just ban parking for five months, I think we could do better than that.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for clarification's sake, when we discussed this issue, it was more of a micro view on this specific region of town. And it was discussed exactly what you're talking about, a more broad action that would address the entire city. But we thought that was something that would be a larger issue, therefore necessitating more discussion, both at the committee level, a more thorough synopsis of what the motion would be, and then a more thorough discussion at the council table level. So again, this was more meant to just kind of focus in on a specific problem area with the intent of using it almost as a case study to see how well it works and then to bring the issue back yet this season so that it could be rediscussed with a much broader view at the committee level and then recommendation passed forward to the council. So that is still an ongoing plan.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one time we even looked at no parking on the street anywhere. That didn't fly. That didn't fly very well. People got to remember, they need to take responsibility themselves, even if they're renters. You know, I get up early in the morning, and I go to the post office, and I see people looking out the window, the snowplow's coming. They don't jump, put their boots on, and move their car. You know, they need to be responsible, too. And that's a lot of the issues in these rental areas. And then with the new additions to the nursing home in Bethesda, employees are parking on the street when they do have parking lots for them, but they're not using them. So that's where the issues come from.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask our Public Works Director, I wasn't sure at the meeting that we had whether, do we have a process in place that if we said, let's just go to a snow emergency citywide, that we could implement that as easy as we did this? Or I had a conversation with Mr. Manzer, and I know he was saying that there were some things that had to be worked on, but, you know, if we had to do a citywide, are we ready to implement that? Is, are there procedures in place or not?
Short answer, I think, is no. However, I think, a couple of things. I think we could do it similarly to the way we do the Central Business District. I see some pretty big hurdles, unfortunately, by doing that. Number one is doing anything overnight in residential areas would not go well for any of you guys' phone calls. So it would have to be during the day, and there are obviously other things going on during the days. And the area would be a concern. There's no way we get through the entire town in one night, or even two nights. And so there are some pretty significant logistics that would have to be taken care of to make it happen. I think we could, but we would have to, I think, one of the biggest ones is, I don't think there's, I think there's little way that we have that amount of noise in a residential area overnight.
Just for discussion. So we have a motion on the table that has been amended that would allow for this. I just want to make a comment that I appreciate the committee working on this, but we have to remember that when we're doing things like this, we really have to look at the city charter, because the city charter is really what drives how a good city functions. And, you know, as we've been told by the city attorney, in order to do this, it takes six votes of the council. So four votes of the council doesn't do it. And so, you know, we need to make sure that we're following what the city charter says. And I remember sitting in those conversations with Councilmember Fagerly, where this would be addressed at nauseam, and meeting after meeting after meeting in the same year, were trying to get this done, just simply because we were following the charter. And so I would just caution us that if we're going to do things, we need to make sure and check the charter, not just do something. It's always easy just to not make a big deal out of it, or not make it bigger than it needs to be, but then we maybe don't need a charter either, if we're not going to follow the charter. So we have a motion on the table that's been made and seconded, and so roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
No.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay.
The resolution fails. Next, Councilmember Plowman.
All right, bear with me while I jump back to my...
Can I ask a question on that?
Takes six votes.
Okay. But can we still temporarily, in the snowbank, put up these no parking signs to be able to get those streets clear?
That would be a question for the city attorney.
Mayor, Councilmember Osmiss, in a quick review of Chapter 15 of your city code, I didn't see a provision for staff to do that administratively. It appeared that the best fit for what you were trying to do was Section 15-53, which was for the council to pass a resolution for a temporary period, and that does require six votes to pass.
All right, next item. We discussed the Cambridge drainage status. Staff did bring forth, for information only, a status update on the Cambridge Drainage Pond Project. The design from Bolton and Mink on the project is complete, and staff will bid the project this upcoming spring. The committee discussed funding options for the project and the potential of using sales tax, the sales tax as a resource for funding. Staff's recommendation is to wait for the legislative outcome to approve the local option sales tax in order to fund the construction of the project. Next item, regarding MinDOT Landscape Partnership Agreement, and this one required a resolution. Staff did bring forth for approval an agreement with MinDOT for the Community Roadside Landscape Partnership Program and resolution authorizing signatures. Program will provide technical and financial assistance for roadside beautification of the five Welcome to Wilmer signs. The funding reimbursement of eligible materials is not to exceed $10,000. A motion was made by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Member Alvarado, to adopt the resolution to provide payment by the state to the city for the acquisition of landscape materials to be placed at various sign locations and authorize signatures on the landscape partnership agreement. That motion did carry, and I will enter that resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a grant and provide the payment to the state of the city, by the state to the city for the acquisition of landscape materials to be placed at various sign locations on the Welcome to Wilmer signs. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmiss.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Final item of our committee meeting was MinDOT Local Trail Connections Program Grant Application. This was also a resolution. Staff did bring forth for approval the MinDOT Local Trail Connections Program Grant Application. The program provides grants to local governments to promote short trail connections between residential areas and desirable locations. Staff has identified the need for a path on 19th Avenue Southwest from First Street to 15th Street in connection to the path the county will construct this year from 21st Street to 15th Street. Motion was made by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Osmiss, to adopt the resolution supporting that grant application by the city made to MinDOT for the Local Trail Connections Program, and that motion carried, and I will enter that here.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
There was no further business to be discussed. The meeting was adjourned at 6:50, and I will make a motion to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the snow problem, I want to make a motion that we call a citywide snow emergency as needed, either the city administrator or Public Works Director, and put in there once that area has been cleared, they can park there again. So...
Second.
Because this other way, the general public didn't know anything about it. It appears that you just had it at a Public Works meeting. Usually, there's 10, 15 people that come, and I don't think they knew about it tonight. So you have to let the people speak. Calling a snow emergency, it's going to be for everyone, then. So no one can, I mean, they can complain, but everyone can complain, then, so I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded to allow the city administrator and Public Works Director to create a snow emergency as needed to clear public streets. I'm assuming you're meaning for the rest of this year of this...
For the rest of the year, yeah.
For the rest of 2019. Councilmember Osmiss.
My issue with that is, going back to, again, how would we physically accomplish that? Are we going to, I mean, the nitty-gritty details of how that would take place? Are we going to do the west side of First Street one night, and then do the east side of town the second day? And then how do we get the notice out to everybody? To me, what has been successful in the downtown area is because we can put signage out, so we don't have to depend on people listening to the radio, reading the newspaper. How do they know that there is a snow emergency? As much as I, you know, this is difficult, to be able to get the streets cleared. And one thing, when the Public Works Director went down those streets on Second, Third, Fourth, and Fifth Street East, one of the things they observed was these cars on the road that had a driveway that they could park in. And so when you go back to, like, Councilmember Fagerly brought up about personal responsibility, those cars could have been in those driveways, and we wouldn't be at this point because the plows then couldn't clear those narrow streets in order for fire trucks and ambulances or police cars to be able to get through the emergency vehicles to help all the citizens. I just, I don't see how we are going to notify the whole city and the timing and the area of town to do a snow emergency.
I think one of the things that, what I heard in the motion, I won't speak for the motioner, but what I heard is that those details would be worked out by the Public Works Director and the city administrator, so they would work those details out. We're the ones that are going to get the phone calls. You're correct with that. But at that point, it gives a lot more leeway, is that your intent? A lot more leeway to staff to work out the logistics. In the presentation, I'm not supposed to be talking here so much, so I'll be quiet. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Where you were going, I think, was good, so I can support your motion. I voted for the other one because we already had had a conversation about the Public Works meeting this week, and going back to try to figure out what we're going to do. I do think it is a question with how they're going to accomplish it, but we have much more snow issues than just Second, Third, Fourth, and Fifth Street. And while this was a, let's see if this can work, I do think the responsibility lies throughout the city with that. And however we can empower Public Works to implement that, Redwood Falls just put one in place, Minneapolis, there's all sorts of them are doing that. I think this is probably a fairer way of putting that responsibility out there. People are going to park on the street for their own reasons, but in, you know, there are some places where people physically can't park in driveways because of the rental situation or other places. They have to find a different place to park on the end streets or whatever, but I think we can find a way to do this, and I do think it's probably a fairer way than just picking four streets, so.
Councilmember Osmiss.
I was going to bring up some of the same points as far as other cities and what they do, and you look at St. Cloud, they just, they have a very defined, regular program for how they do it, the even streets, the odd streets, so that the public is aware. I'm just thinking there's a lot of, to me, this is cloudy as to how the public, and who's going to tow all these cars when they don't understand or know that there was an emergency and that they weren't supposed to be on that street.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm struggling with this, but I can be supportive of the motion, because we did acknowledge the need for something like this in the city. That's not the debate, I don't believe. I believe everybody would agree that all over the city, there are areas that need this. The thing that I struggle with just a little bit is, staff did convey to us that something like a full city policy was going to take a constructed plan and method and whatnot. So this motion puts a lot on them to get right, and I acknowledge that. And do I believe that they're up to the task? Absolutely. Now, it's been conveyed to us that it's not going to be an easy feat, but I can, I can be convinced to trust that it can and will happen, and that it will accomplish what's necessary. Again, the goal, the primary goal was, is just the, not only the safety, but the practicality of addressing the issue at hand. And I think, you know, like was mentioned earlier, this was the overall general topic, but we were thinking that it was going to be something that was going to have to be a fairly comprehensive plan outlaid to us. So if we pass this, we're kind of going with faith, but staff has shown in the past that when we put some faith in them, they can come through. So that's throughout all go.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think with our website, with Facebook, Twitter, I don't do that stuff, but the radio and newspaper, and we'll have to do like the stingers do, maybe, put some signs out, snow emergency, citywide, on First Street, Wilmer Avenue, whatever. I mean, if the people don't see that, I don't know where they've been living, then. And then that's why I said, as soon as the street has been done, you can park there again, so.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in agreement with what Councilmember Fagerly has said. Minnesotans know that there's snow emergencies. It's just innate with being a Minnesotan. The people, a lot of times, I guess, stong are the ones that come in for, or newbies, let's say. I think we're aware of it. I think if we use the media channels that we're excelling at right now, I think that will be good. We've got great partners with the communication, radio stations. I think it's a safety issue, and I think we have to do a blanket over the city. I think that's the fairest way to do it. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmiss.
Could we hear from the Public Works Director?
What would you like to have him say? I think he's over his full. Mr. Christensen, your thoughts?
Getting right to the point, I don't think this is going to work, as being discussed. There are, as mentioned before, many, many logistics that we've worked many years on, on just the Central Business District, to get right. Until this year, with eight signs, by the way, is all we have, we have towed cars every night we've done an emergency. And that includes the nights that we've done newspaper, radio, social media, everything. Those signs do work in the Central Business District, keeping in mind the small area that that includes. I think when you're dealing with the vast majority of residential areas, and you guys know how many rentals there are, there are, there will be a logistical nightmare to try to get rid of the cars that are not moved voluntarily. And then do you do it during the day so that you don't wake people up at night when there's the backup alarms and the trucks and the loaders? Or do you do it during night and receive those phone calls? I don't, I would love for the council to just say, please do what it takes to get rid of the snow, which is what we attempted to do with the temporary signs. So outside of that, I'm not sure the snow emergency is the easiest way to go about doing it.
Councilmember Nelson, follow me. Plowman. New comments based off the comments of the, of the Public Works Director moving towards consensus on the motion.
I just was going to comment, I think that's what we're trying to do with this, is to empower Public Works to be able to do what they need to do. If that, if a snow, we're not saying clear out the community of cars, but it empowers you to be able to use a snow emergency and to come up with some method to do that. And so I think we are empowering... And so, I think we are empowering you to come up with options to clean the streets. And I think this is basically just expanding that there's more issues than just those streets we talked about.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, two-part question. Was that the intent of the original motion, was to give the administrator in the Public Works Department to create this program and do what is practical and feasible?
I thought it was, and I don't expect it to be one day. That's why it's "snow emergency," it could be two, three days. But, once that street in front of your place has been cleared, you can park there. So, if he has to on Second and Third Street, do like they do with new construction, knock on the door, have someone knock on the door and say, "We're removing the snow here today, move your car." Just, all you gotta do is tow one, and the neighbors are gonna know, and they'll be calling the other neighbors to get your cars out of there, so.
Okay, thank you. Then, the second part of my question, if I may, for the Public Works Director, then given that and given the, oh, the notion that if the motion gives more liberty to the Public Works Department to create this program as it goes into work with the practicality and the feasibility, does that change your feeling about it at all?
Councilmember Plowman, not really. I think it would, based on the conversation tonight, I think we need to, we could have a plan for next year, but I don't think, I don't think there's any way of getting rid, based on the conversation tonight, I don't think there's any way of getting rid of the snow in the entire downtown in the next two days before the next snowstorm comes.
I don't believe that the council's directive is to have the streets curb-to-curb clear before the next snowstorm comes. What I've been hearing from the six members, or five members talking, is that the intent is to put a tool in the toolbox for the Public Works Director and the city administrator to load that toolbox however they choose to load it, so that we can address the snow issues for the rest of spring of 2019. After that, we'll come back and then have that more in-depth conversation that Councilmember Plowman talked about in his opening comments. That's when the whole toolbox gets filled. This is a stopgap. If you wanna do it for one block of one street, so you can get it cleared out, you can do it. You don't have to do the entire town, you can do whatever portion they want, right? Isn't that what the motion was? Yeah, that's what the motion was. Councilmember Osmus.
I can appreciate giving them those tools to get that done and to try to, something to get our streets clear. But realistically, that's not the answer. To put it into perspective, think of Wilmerfest, okay? Every single year, we have a parade in the downtown. It's the same day, it's the same time. And signs go up the day before, we placard all of the cars with signs, "Don't park here because there's going to be a parade." And then, the day of, we placard and we say, "Don't park here, there's going to be a parade." And a half an hour before that parade starts, the police department has to tow cars out of that parade route. And that's when we have done everything possible, and that is a known, year after year. I am just thinking of people in the community that are not going to be informed that there is gonna be cars getting towed, and then I think of the time. And I understand you're trying to give tools to Public Works, but then somebody has to go ahead of time and tow all of these vehicles before the plows can come through. And the logistics of where are they gonna go, and then, and uproar of the vehicles getting towed. I get that, but I just, I just don't think that is the answer of what we were looking for. I don't physically, feasibly, realistically see that working.
We have a motion on the table to empower the Public Works Director and the city administrator to establish a snow emergency routes as needed within the community for the rest of the spring snow season of 2019. This will be a roll call, and it will take six votes to pass. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Chantis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
No.
Plowman.
No.
Resolution passes. Motion is on the table to file the minutes.
Doesn't pass.
I'm sorry, doesn't pass, fails. Motion is on the table to file the minutes, any other conversations?
Let it snow.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Will the poll, same sign? That the motion passes. Next, Finance Committee report. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, February 21, 2019. All the committee members were present, in addition, Finance Director Okun and Councilmember Kathy Chantis. We did not have public comments, and we do not have any recommended action items for council. We had two lengthy discussion items, and the first one was on the 2019 improvement funding. We reviewed the bonding calendar and project costs. We talked briefly about the history and the funding sources for the street improvement With that, regarding the Capital Investment Fund, Public Works Fund, Municipal State Aid, the information is in the packet there. I would ask if any council members have questions that weren't in attendance, we can call in Councilmember, or, excuse me, Finance Director, Mr. Okun, to review that. We also reviewed and discussed proposed legislation in three possible additional transportation funding sources for the future. The next item we discussed was distribution of the comprehensive assessment policy. Mr. Okun asked the committee to review this document. We will be discussing it again in the future, basically to review how the assessment policy has worked in the past and just looking if we might need to make changes to that process for funding. Does anyone have a question on either the improvement funding or the distribution of the, our assessment policy? All right, hearing none. I will go on to future agenda items. We asked the committee members to bring forth if they have any other agenda items. We reviewed our meeting schedule, and we were adjourned at 6:16. And I will make a motion to accept the minutes of the Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion made in second to file the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting of February 21, 2019. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will the poll, same sign? That motion does carry. Next is Labor Relations Committee report. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Labor Committee met Monday, February 25, 2019, at 5:15 PM. Mr. Muske, myself, Vicky Davis, Audrey, Councilmember Nelson was there, along with the Human Services Director, Samantha Beckman, and Mr., our mayor, West Central Tribune, and our Public Works Director, Sean Christensen, and from the public was Peterson. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Muske. We asked for public comments, there was no public comment. The discussion was made on the GIS Specialist/Surveyor Job Description Update. Staff brought forth a, for approval, updating the GIS Specialist to Surveyor Job Description to appeal to a wider range of applicants. We've been looking for that position for quite some time. Public Works Director Christensen provided background information on the position and the need to have an applicant with more surveying experience than GIS experience. A motion was made by Councilmember, myself, Alvarado, and seconded by Councilmember Davis to approve the updated job description, which is in your packets. Consideration, we're gonna, let's see, hold on for a second, I thought there was, in your package, you will see that we, and maybe I should turn this over, the Public Works Director, talk about that, to change it from the, to take out the GIS Specialist nomenclature and to highlight the Surveyor One. Do you want to comment on that, please?
I can. Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. The bottom line, here, the intent is to, let me back up. When we changed it from a Surveyor to GIS Specialist Surveyor, our, my intent was that it would open up to more, more people, more applicants, more views. It didn't turn out that way. So, at this point, I'm asking to go back to the Surveyor position, and what that does on paper anyway is remove, is change the title, and I think it removes one or two lines in the description that deal specifically with the GIS stuff, and knowing full well that most surveyors have some familiarity with GIS, which is what we've had in the past. And my intent is to, again, to open it up, open up the field in hopes of getting some more applicants.
So, do I make a, I don't recall that we made a motion at the committee, I don't see that that's in the notes. It was, yeah, recommended motion to approve the Surveyor One job description as presented. And I don't see, I guess I made that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to change the description, eliminating the GIS Specialist portion language, and changing it to the Surveyor One description. Yes.
Question. Are we, are we going to have any stipulation in there that they become GIS Specialist qualified at any, in any, over a two- or three-year period or anything?
Councilmember Osmus, in this job description, no. Our intent, my intent, staff intent at this point, there is enough GIS requirements or need to hire someone to do just that. And so, that's something that Ms. Swedberg and I have been working on internally at this point. We have not brought it to Labor at this time, yet, but there is enough work for a GIS person with the databases involved in those, in that information, to have that as a specific person. So, they would work hand in hand, which is why I thought the position would work as one, because the Surveyor would gather some of that information and turn that over to the GIS person.
I was just going to ask, we did have this discussion at the meeting, how GIS is being handled right now, and it might be helpful, before we say we're just hiring someone, could you just review for us how GIS is being handled right now?
Councilmember Nelson, right now, what we do is, well, when we have a Surveyor, what we do is gather the survey information, which again, is only part of GIS. GIS is a vast amount of information, in fact, even things you, guaranteed you're not thinking of, about, about items and assets within the city. So, right now, what we do, the Surveyor would gather information, turn that information over to a consultant that compiles that information and then submits it to the countywide GIS system that we are teaming up with the, with the county on, and that the general public can log into and see a limited amount of information that we have presented there. So, right now, we don't do any of the uploading ourselves, we gather information and pass it off.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, or Co-Chairman. So, is there a surveying school in Minnesota, or you have to go to North Dakota, or where's the close?
There's a, Councilmember Fagerly, there's a number of them in Minnesota, and we've reached out to, I would say, six or eight of them at this point, that have surveying as one of their curriculums. We've reached out to them in hopes of enticing someone with the surveying degree, or someone that wants to be a licensed Surveyor, would like to come and at least get their start here with the city of Wilmer.
So, they don't have to do an internship for that curriculum?
Councilmember Fagerly, the way it works, it works very similarly to an engineer, where you get out of school, you have a four-year degree, you, then you have to practice under a Surveyor for four years, and then you take another test to become a license. Where it gets a little tricky here is, I'm not a Surveyor, I'm not a licensed Surveyor, and so, we'd have to figure out what other implications there are, and if they can still get their license, if they intend to become licensed.
How many more credits do you need to become a Surveyor?
All of them, I think.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Surveyor One job description as presented. Additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will the poll, same sign? That motion passes. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talked about the Department Head Sickley policy, and we've, there's gonna be a continuation of the discussion regarding the increasing sickly payout for the Department Heads to match other city employees' cash out levels. The cash out amount has not been increased in several years and was not increased when union employees' cash outs were increased. Staff will compile total benefit packages, comparison, comparison reports, and continue the discussion at the next Labor Meeting. Item number seven, pay scale maximums, we ran out of time, so that is on future. And number eight was the City Administrator's Review Update. Staff received one request for possible change in the City Administrator's Review Process that included meeting the community leaders in regards to the administrator. Information from our Labor Attorney and the League of Minnesota's will be provided at the next Labor Meeting, Committee Meeting. There being no further business, the Committee Meeting was adjourned at 6:15 PM by Chairman Muske. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the Labor Relations Committee?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poll, same sign?
Next, we'll have the Community Development Committee report.
Want me to do it? I wasn't there, but I can do it.
You certainly can, if you'd like, or?
All right, I can do it.
It's a pretty simple one.
It is. Community Development Committee met on Monday, February 25, City Office Building, at 6:25. Item two was public comment, no one was there to speak. Item three was a tax abatement application, but it really wasn't an application because there was no formal application attached. But, there was a corporation or LLC that was there to speak about the tax abatement program. They just purchased two 12 units last year, and they're thinking about building 24 more units in another building. They talked about they want to build a new complex building and fix up the existing buildings. They were looking at a tax abatement for 10 years. The committee reviewed the city tax abatement policy, and they asked more questions of the owner. After discussion, a motion was made and seconded to move forward with a preliminary request for tax abatement policy and request the formal application from AEHM LLC, and that motion carried. I'll introduce that, but I'm not sure why.
Staff wanted that to come forward as a motion so that they would have direction to move this project forward.
Okay. I'll second then.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I just was seeking clarification, and we kinda talked about this at the, at the meeting also. So, our bringing this forward tonight does not mean, we did not receive any So, our bringing this forward tonight does not mean, we did not receive any information regarding their financials, any information regarding, that, basically, that we reviewed the policy, does this, does this meet the requirements to apply for this? And so, my, my question is, is by making a motion and bringing this, we are not implying to them that this is something that we're going to do, it is simply telling them that they can apply for this. And I know there's a fee for that, and so, I didn't know if there were any other steps that we should probably be looking at before, to make sure that, that this is a viable project for what we're doing. And I know we talked about that at the meeting, too. I don't know if you have any additional thoughts on that?
Ms. Swedberg?
Mayor, members of the council, that's exactly correct. We, we received an application and the fee for the application, but the application, for lack of a better term, was not complete. And so, staff felt that it was best to present it in front of the committee to get a feel for whether the committee and the council wanted to move forward with the, what I'll, what I'll deem the exploratory phase for the tax abatement. So, we're not introducing for a public hearing at this point. We simply reviewed the tax, the tax abatement policy and determined whether this project would fit within that realm and be appropriate to move forward with, with receiving the cash flow analysis and, and different things to review the project for tax abatement. So, the developers, it has been communicated clearly that this does not mean that we're guaranteeing anything, it's simply that we're moving forward and gathering those needed components before we introduce the request for a public hearing.
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think that's important clarification, because I received some emails today and some calls today, I think, just for the public who is watching and for the public record, that this is not a formalized action, approving or denying, that this is just a continuance of the, a formalized continuance of the process.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that for us.
Councilmember Schwantus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm confused in what it is we're trying to do here. To me, it just seems like this should go back to committee until the application is complete, and the information can be presented to the committee. So, what do we actually accomplish? Because we're not giving them any sense of anything by this, approving this motion. I'm, I'm, maybe I'm missing something here, but what does, what are we accomplishing by this motion?
My understanding in talking with Mr. Olson is that he doesn't want to continue down the process of getting all the architects and everybody involved, if the council isn't even going to consider it, because it is really an out-of-the-box request, basically. So, basically, it's, there's, there's currently two 12-unit complexes there, and he would be adding a 24-unit, and what he told me at the meeting was that he's simply looking for direction that the council thinks that adding additional housing in that area of town is an advantage, and he was hoping to have a motion, basically saying that, you're correct, it doesn't give any authority, it doesn't give any direction, other than just that the council basically supports his continuation in filling this out. I think that's somewhat correct, isn't it? Ms. Swedberg?
Yeah, I will note, the Planning Commission has reviewed this 24-unit building. It, the, the area that it's in is, is a little bit more dense than what the zoning ordinance normally allows, but there is a planned unit development that has been approved and amended for this 24-unit building. So, as it stands, if the numbers worked for the developer, the Planning Commission has given their okay to move forward with the development. At this point, Mr. Olson came back and said he would like to request tax abatement, and so, we, he filled out the form, though we haven't received all of the analysis. And so, before we moved forward and went through that whole process, we wanted to make sure that it aligned with the tax abatement policy to begin with, before we went through the time and effort to collect all of that information. So, the motion, I think, like, has been stated earlier, is really just a, a formalized motion to move forward with collecting the needed information to make an informed decision.
Councilmember Plowman, followed by Osmus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments following this express no support or, or non-support of the project whatsoever, but I do have to agree with Councilwoman Schwantus in that it seems a little bit unusual of a request, and I want to be careful to not set precedent for the future, that this seems like a preliminary request to the request, which is something that we haven't done before, at least in my experience thus far. And so, I wonder if, I wonder if continuing down this, is this going to, do you have any concerns of this maybe opening the door to, okay, now the next project that comes, we're going to be asking, I mean, okay, I don't want to put it this way, but I'm just going to do it, tire-kicking. Are people going to be coming with projects and say, run it by the council and, and see if we got any traction here, so that we can save some money on our soft costs? Because in doing this, that may be exactly what we're doing. Do you have concerns on that route?
Normally, we, we don't go this route. The last tax abatement, and really the only tax abatement example that we have in the city for residential development, was the trailer park just south of the Midwest Technology Campus. And in that particular case, the tax abatement prelim, this, this was kind of the, the route that it took, that it had this preliminary request before the, the cash flows were actually run. And, and the council, it went through the committee, the committee structure was in place at that point, it went through committee, and then there was a, a motion to move forward with the tax abatement, and then it came back for that introduction and, and public hearing, and that's why we chose to go that same route for this particular request, because it isn't, it isn't always seen, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Osmus, followed by Nelson.
No, my question was answered, I'm good.
Councilmember Nelson?
I just wanted, when we met in the committee, we walked through the tax abatement policy, and I believe Ms. Swedberg helped to point out how our tax abatement policy would allow for this type of project. We, that's kind of the steps that we walked through. We did not have any information other than visual of what the plan was, and so, maybe just to seek clarification, are we implying something with the motion that we were not intending to do, to say that we are giving preliminary, go ahead, apply? Is that a problem, since we haven't reviewed anything yet?
Mr. Scott, City Attorney?
Mayor, members of the council, I suppose it would come down to the precise wording of the motion. But I actually, I could be wrong on this, but I think that I remember, and maybe some of the longer-serving members of the council may remember, but I think at some point, the council actually gave direction to staff to bring abatement projects forward like this for a preliminary kind of thumbs up, like, yes, we're interested, proceed as, according to our policy now. And I think the reasoning was, the council at the time felt that when it got too far down the path, and all the financials had been vetted, and staff supported the abatement, and it came to the council for the first time, council felt like they didn't have enough control in the early stages. I don't know if there's any formal policy or motion that was ever passed to that effect, but I do seem to remember that conversation taking place on previous projects. To answer Councilmember Nelson's question, I think the motion as phrased in the committee report is the sort of very preliminary statement of interest. It would essentially be seen as a council saying, yes, this, you know, very rough concept development that's been presented to us is something that we could consider for an abatement under our policies. Obviously, the detailed review of the financial projections and the specific development plans would still have to take place, and it, at the end of the process, would ultimately still be a council discretionary approval to give or not give, there's no entitlement to this abatement. But this motion would just be a, a very preliminary statement of interest, I think.
Councilmember Schwantus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having heard all of that, I don't want my question to be misunderstood by Mr. Olson, so, please, I would support it moving forward, support the concept coming forward.
Additional conversation? Councilmember Fagerly?
So, tax abatement, they pay the existing tax on the property?
Yes.
Okay, so is this all one parcel, or is there different parcels of land there?
This is where it gets a little tricky. It's currently three parcels. The issue from a planning commission standpoint is that the parcel that they're looking at building the 24 units on is actually a landlocked parcel, which we strongly try to move away from as quickly as possible. So, from a planning commission standpoint, it is requested that he combine the parcels. That being said, that doesn't mean necessarily that it's actually going to be a problem to combine the parcels and move forward with the tax abatement, because the tax abatement would really be for any newly created taxes from this 24-unit building. So, it would just be a portion of those increase, that increase in taxes that would actually be abated.
But he'd continue to pay existing tax?
Yes.
On the other two buildings?
Exactly.
And he'll remove the garages?
Yep, the garages are going to be removed as part of his development plan currently. And the, any, any improvements to the 12-unit building would not be included in the tax abatement either, it would strictly be for that, that new 24-unit building.
Okay, thank you.
We had a motion? Motion, and we have a second. The motion made and seconded to approve the consideration of the tax abatement application and to move that process forward. The other thing I think he mentioned is that he was going to add a playground in that area as well, or augment the playground that was there?
Yep, that, there is no playground currently, but it was a, a large public, public comment that green space was a concern, taking away the majority of the green space that's currently on this site for, for this apartment complex. So, it is his intent to build, have a playground site there, parking is all taken care of, he's going to remove the garages, and he's currently working on improvements to the existing two 12-unit buildings.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? That motion does carry. Councilmember Nelson? I'm sorry, Councilmember Fagerly?
There be, there was no further business, so I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? That motion does carry. Next is the consideration of the Marcus Highway 12 Development Final Plat. Ms. Swedberg?
All right, Mayor's Members, Members of the council, this is the final plat for the Marcus Highway 12 Development. This was seen back on February 19th for the preliminary plat. Part of the, the discussion and the reason it went into the preliminary and final plat structure was because of the access on Highway 12. Staff was in contact with MINDOT and made it a, recommends that it become a condition that the applicant work with MINDOT to properly permit the controlled access along Highway 12, to be realigned with 23rd Street. All other concerns of the preliminary plat were taken care of, and we, as, as we did back with the preliminary plat, we still do not have any development plans for this particular site. So, it's just cleaning up some of the, the parcel lines and, and different things that was existing from the old Elm Lane Trailer Park that were existing. So, it's staff recommendation to approve the final plat with the five listed conditions.
Move to approve? Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the final plat with five conditions as stated in the current report. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? That motion does carry. Next is consideration of Second Avenue Southeast Street Vacation Amendment. Ms. Swedberg?
Mayor's Members of the council, we saw the Second Avenue Street Vacation request earlier this, earlier this year, late last year. The public hearings that were held in January, both at Planning Commission and at council level, had the intention of vacating the entire portion of Second Avenue west of 20th Street Southeast, and this has to do with this Marcus Highway 12 Development. So, it's along Highway 12, next to the EDC building and some county land out there. However, staff, after recording, realized that the, the legal description that was actually submitted had an error. It referenced the east line of Block Four, and it should have referenced the east lot, block of like, of, the east line of Block Five. And so, what was technically vacated was only about 30 feet, and it needs to be about 130 feet. So, with that, it would be staff recommendation to adopt the resolution amending Resolution 1901, vacating the street as requested, effective March 4th.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consideration of Second Avenue Southeast Street Vacation. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Ms. Swedberg, you were the presenter extraordinaire this evening, good job. City Administrator comments?
I forgot to tell everyone tonight, please bring your mics in. We had a couple of citizens call in and said they couldn't understand some of you. I won't mention any names, Rick, but you could bring in your mic.
I couldn't hear you.
And so...
Wonder why?
I, I just did want to mention that. And then also, I don't have any comments, but glad to see the mayor and everyone that went to the Capitol today, and we made it back, and I heard it went fine. Maybe you want to comment on that, thank you.
Comments from the council? Councilmember Fagerly?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Schwantus?
I'll pass, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado?
I want to mention that we have a boys' basketball game on Tuesday night, it's a playoff game, that should be fun. Main Street meeting this past weekend. Ms. Swedberg, do you want to make any comments about the attendance and what you thought about that?
We had the Artist on Main Street workshops on Saturday, and I was very pleased to see that we had over 30 people turn up between the two workshops that we held, one at the Barn Theater and one at the African Development Center. So, we have lots of interest, and I'm, I'm excited to see the projects that actually come forward.
Thank you, it was, it was fun, was fun. And then, I'm going to say that if you get a chance to participate in some of the projects that are happening at the community center, they've got a cool thing where they're having citizens decorate these tiles, and you're painting them with ceramic paints, and then the mayor of New London...
Bill Cosman.
Bill Cosman, thank you, threw a blank there. He's taking those, they're going to fire them up, and then there's a committee that's going to make some benches, and they're going to insert these tiles in these benches. And, and it's, everybody's, kids, older people, it's just a lot of fun. So, if you get an opportunity, they're looking for 1,000 tiles, and I think they have about 100. So, there's plenty of opportunity to decorate a tile at some of these programs, so check that out. I think getting involved with the activities in town will become the new cool, so get involved, thank you.
Councilmember Osmus?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that I did receive two phone calls over the last week about the snow removal, and having to do with the buildup on the corners, and specifically 18th, 17th Street Southwest and Wilmer Avenue, because traffic comes in pretty fast, coming from the, the west, and they're nosing out and can't see over the big banks. What I explained to them was that, and they, again, also said Public Works doing a great job, getting the snow removed, but I said, because of the constant snow that we've had every three or five days, first priority is clearing the streets, next priority is sidewalks, and then when they're caught up, they can start to work on the buildup on the corners. Anything, would that be correct? Mr. Christensen?
Councilmember Osmus, that's exactly correct. We've got, I wrote this down, wrote those intersections down, but we've got a number... We've got, I wrote this down, wrote those intersections down, but we've got a number of them that we're trying to get. In fact, I know we were on Wilmer Avenue late last week trying to get some of the corners taken care of. With the forecast, what, later this week, that might get pushed back again, so.
Yep, and, and I also explained to them that priority is, I mean, because every intersection is going to be like that, but our main thoroughfares are Trot, Wilmer Avenue, 19th Avenue, the larger, main thoroughfares through town are probably going to be the priority. But just to let you know, that's what I explained to them, and I, that was what I understood of how the snow removal would happen, and hopefully it just quits snowing soon.
Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick shout out to the Wilmer Hockey Association, a lot of the youth leagues are either done for the season or winding down, and there are so many great volunteers and people that give hours and hours and hours and hours and hours to our kids in this community, and I think that's so cool, because it develops all kinds of great skills and attributes in our local young people, and I think it's pretty cool to watch how that all comes together. So it's, just want to highlight that one group, particular group, because of the season, how great a job they did this year. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I did go to St. Paul today with one of the group, we, we did do, had hearing for, in the house, but I will defer to the mayor to talk about that. It was a good day, and step one is on its, on its way done.
I have no comment. entertain the motion, do adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.